Gary, you're looking back on it. You're, you're looking mobile and I don't know.
Uh, Sharon.
Some day better than others. I spent a couple hours in the yard today. And putting on Christmas decorations and first thing I did was ice my leg.
Remember not able to.
I have contracted the.
So I guess.
I'll see what happens.
But he hasn't been around. That's all.
Are drugs coming or? Okay.
It didn't.
Yeah, I missed the email that said, now remind me, are you? Said no.
I was gonna say.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
Like to call to order the December meeting of the Z B A. Uh, roll call for members present.
Yep.
Berg.
Jerry, are you here? Okay, yes.
Kloski is absent Jacobitz.
Here.
Bealy. Miller's absent Berthold.
Here.
You have a quorum. Okay. Uh, we have the minutes from our November meeting in the packet. They had a chance to look them over. Any additions or corrections? If not, entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Support.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Okay, opposed. Minutes are approved. Uh, the only item on the written agenda. Unless somebody has something different is dealing with the signs on Treat Street. Which we. Tabled at the November meeting in search of some more information and some more specifics. And I'm guessing from what I'm reading, they're only asking for a couple of different things now.
Should we untable it before we talk?
Well, I just, I didn't even, yeah, I probably should. I didn't know if we wanted to do that until we, if we actually had somebody present or not.
We can talk about.
Yeah.
I moved that we untabled the discussion of these sign variances for Omni Source.
I would support that.
We have a motion to support. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, it's off the table. Now, they've changed their request. Is that correct?
I think they've modified the freestanding sign to comply with the requirements for monument sign.
Okay, that I removed from the package they sent. There's three new signs they're requesting. Either of the two. Well, I, I don't know what we want to consider the principal frontage, but the brick side. E- either one of those signs meets the size standard.
You say meets or does not meet?
It does, but having two of them is what the issue is.
Okay.
Then it also appears if you look at. This one that's on the blue container, it appears that they've put a symbol as well. So there's two signs there, although they're trying to claim it as one, but there's two signs there, one of seventy-two square feet and one of thirty-six square feet.
On the blue container.
This only has one size, you know.
What do you mean there's a symbol?
I think. Oh, that's, that's existing. I'm sorry, that's existing. No, that's existing. I'm not.
And what do you mean by the big blue container?
The big blue.
This wall. Looks like a. Oh, that's, that's, that's a wall of their building. Yes, yeah, okay.
So that.
The one most to the east.
That one is seventy-nine square feet. Their other front, they're claiming is eighteen point five one square feet.
And is anything allowed on the blue wall?
There. Well, that depends what we consider their principal frontage.
Right.
So they are on Treat Street, so their frontage would be that.
Would be that. So that one would be okay.
And if they had multiple frontages, they could have a secondary sign of the same on the brick side, but they don't have a second frontage, so. Realist.
The question would be in your discussion last time was, is the curvature of the street there such that, you know, that would be a unique circumstance, so you could treat it. It, it clearly is not what the ordinance calls two frontages, but would, would it be fair to treat it like that? Uh, because of the way the street goes there. And then Jeremy, what? What did they do? Is the truck scale sign now compliant? Because it doesn't have copy.
So it's not compliant in the way that it is still attached to the fence, so it's a directional sign. Directional signs can only be three square feet. This is.
Two by four, eight square feet, eight square feet.
There.
Mm-hmm.
Asking for a five foot variance on that size. They scaled it down from what it currently is. I don't know. There was never any permits pulled for that one, so I can't say that that was approved to begin with.
Okay, before we get a deeper, deeperness, are we handling this tonight? Traditionally, we always ask petitioners to be here, but.
Well, they have been here and you have heard from them and they did resubmit this per your request. You, you have every. You know, it's within your right to go ahead and consider it if you.
Based on the information we have.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
I mean, if you don't want to, if you feel like you need to be able to communicate with them.
It was just.
Free to.
Come back again.
Postpone it, but you know, this is.
I expressed this last meeting. I, I would be inclined, I, I realize it's not technically true, but I would be inclined to grant them the variance for the wall signs on the basis of this X as a corner lot. It, it, it functionally is kind of like a corner lot. Uh, and so it wouldn't be out of character to, to grant them a variance on that basis in the traffic coming from either direction. Should be able to identify their building. And if we only permit them once, a sign on one face of the building, then that kind of precludes that.
Keep, keep in mind though, that they do have the monument sign.
Yeah.
That, that does identify it from either direction.
Also swayed by the fact that these are already existing signs and what they're proposing is actually smaller, smaller than what they currently have too.
Another consideration in their favor, you know, I don't like signs, is that they're so close to the road.
Can you put your mic down? We are recording.
They're so close to the road that you.
Don't see it till you get.
You don't see it until, so that, for me, that's another step in, in their favor. But now I can't remember where the monument sign is.
It's on the, it's on the west side where there's big scale is, where, where, where the scale is.
So I didn't put that in the packet.
Because they don't really need a variance for it.
Right. They have that. So when you're coming.
From the east. I'm sorry.
Yeah, tools. So you're gonna go by the truck scale sign, but it's over there. So you'll see the monument sign, so you don't need a great big.
Well, of course, that's, that's also their front entrance.
Scale sign, yeah.
That, that's their front, that's their front door there.
And their monument sign is gonna be relatively small too, complies with the right size, I think.
Okay.
So monuments can.
Well, very.
Yeah. It'll definitely be smaller than what they have.
What they have.
You know, on the other, on the other hand. On the other hand, they, yeah, exactly. This isn't the kind of business that gets drive-by traffic and someone goes, oh, I should stop in at Omni Source.
Right.
Uh, I didn't even realize it was there. Anybody that's going there is going to go, is there for the purpose of going to that distance. And probably already knows where it is. The huge truck hauling recyclables or, you know, a big load full of junk cars is not just cruising around, looking for a place to drop them off at. So, you know, there's, there, an argument could be made to saying they could get by with a four-foot sign that said, this is, you know, here we are.
Well, likewise, the, uh, I think the, the brick wall is on that same, that's the same side where the monument.
Yes, exactly. Yes. Yep. And this is a, this is not the proper phrasing for a meeting like this, but the fact is, I really don't think it makes a whole lot of difference. And part of me is inclined to give them what they want, just because I don't think it has a whole lot of effect on anybody else or on the neighbors. Um, other than maybe creating a precedent.
Well, you do have, you know, the unique situation that you were able to identify, which is the curvature of the street. You know, so that, in, in a sense, if you're inclined toward the two wall signs, that gives you a rationale that distinguishes it from other most other circumstances, right?
Thank you.
The wall signs are for X size. I mean, they meet the size requirement.
For any one wall sign, but given that there's two of them.
So.
Exceed it.
So then to approve this, we're looking at a variance of an additional sign, not a size, not.
Right.
Dimensional variance, but.
Well, Jeremy, does it still exceed the total square foot footage that's allowed for wall signs then?
If, if they were on, if they were on a corner, they would be allowed two signs like. So they would be allowed. Identical signs, which it appears they are, other than the color being brown on the brick wall, which makes no sense for what, if you look at the other sign, it's neither of them make sense because it's blue with white and then brown with white. And I don't know if that's supposed to indicate just white lettering and not a brown.
But the total area of the two signs is what?
The total area would be eighteen, so hundred and, hundred and two square feet. And they're allowed, I believe. Put that, but they're allowed one point five feet, I believe, or at least one foot of linear frontage. And I think it's a hundred and five feet of that blue section of the building, so.
So the area of the two signs complies with what would be allowed for one sign if it were on the one side of the building.
And the, and so there, the other thing is they are, if you consider this a corner, this ordinance says that they can have an identical sign on the side. So with them being identical in nature.
Or at least, or at least identical in size, yeah.
It doesn't necessarily have to be, it doesn't say that's the identical in size. It just has to be
Same size.
The same sign.
Oh.
Be an identical, I, I guess you could say identical sign size as well, but it says identical sign.
Would they be allowed if it were a normal corner lot? Would they be allowed a sign on each wall?
Mm-hmm.
Plus a monument sign?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
You, the only thing with monuments is you cannot have a pole and a monument. You can have one or the other. So that's the only caveat to those, but as far as these are concerned, they could have that.
They're a lot better looking than what they're replacing.
Yeah, I, see, I would be inclined, I guess, to, to grant the request and when we'll get to finding the facts to make the argument that it is a, for a practical.
Difficulties?
As a practical matter, it's a corner lot.
Yeah.
Right. So all they need is a variance to allow an additional sign.
Just a sign.
As though, as though it were a corner lot.
Size, so that one is five, so they need a five square foot.
And then they need a five.
Five square foot variance for these truck scales.
Let's make them.
What's your square footage of this sign? A lot of dimensional sign.
Long to say trucks.
Oh, it's three.
Except, except.
Okay.
I'm driving a semi down that road. I need to sign this big that says scale.
Okay.
It's considerably smaller than what they have there.
Yeah. And what they were asking for last week.
But it, it still doesn't beat the ordinance.
Yeah.
Any questions from anybody in our audience, distinguished guests?
I have no question.
Okay. I will be online by the looks of it. Okay. All right. And have a motion to do whatever it is we want to do.
Wanting to find your fact first or the motion?
Oh, I suppose you should find the fact. Thank you. It's been a while.
I, I can go either way.
You have to find the fact before you do the motion. Okay, one, the alleged practical difficulties are acceptable. Procured to the property of the person requesting the variance and results from condition do not exist generally throughout the city. Uh, we talked about the, uh, the curvature there of the road. Uh, their property does extend road going in two different directions. I mean, as far as north, south and east west. So, uh, it is a rather unique property. So, uh, I will find yes for number one. Number two, the alleged practical difficulties which result in failure to grant the variance include substantially more than inconvenience or inability to obtain a higher financial return. I don't even think that necessarily implies to this particular sign. Uh, it's there to identify the building and help direct people where they need to be. So I will find yes for number two. Allow the, allowing the variance will result in substantial justice being done, considering the public benefit intended to cure in this article practical difficulties that, uh, suffered by failure of the zoning board appeals to grant the variance and the rights of others whose property would be affected by the allowance of the variance. Uh, I don't see how anybody's property is gonna be affected because in essence they are gonna be, have less signage than they had right now, size of signs. And we'll find yes for number three.
Accept.
Accept. Then he has something to say.
Benefit of a bigger sign. Just wanted to say it once.
The what?
There is no public benefit to a bigger sign.
It prevents a semi from driving past and having to back up and turn around and.
Somebody's driving.
And somebody's driveway. I don't.
You turned me right around, don't that why?
Number four, the finding of facts set forth in this, uh, subsection shall be made by the zoning board appeals, which is not empowered to grant a variance without an affirmative finding of facts category set forth in such a sub- subsection, which we have done. So based on that, we can entertain a motion one way or the other.
Mister Chairperson, I would move to approve of the requested variances that would permit two wall signs as proposed in a five-square-foot variance for the truck scale sign.
Do we have support?
Support.
Do we have any questions on the motion? Any comments, questions? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Bealy.
Support.
Jacobitz.
Yes.
Berg.
Yes.
Berthold. Yes.
Washington passing Nancy.
Okay, they have their signs. Let them know to go for it.
A different question, Mike, is how does this compare with when we denied McDonald's an extra sign?
When we, like.
When they built their new building on two twenty-three and fifty-two. Uh, we denied a sign, uh, at the, I see it when I go through the drive-through.
Well, first of all, Jerry, that, that was under a different ordinance. That, that was long enough ago that sign ordinance has changed.
So it doesn't.
And I think. And we had to do the wall sign, didn't it?
Yeah.
Something on the wall sign.
It was wall signs. I just, I'm just curious, that's all.
They wanted a third one. They, they were allowed their two and they wanted.
Yes, they wanted a third one.
Yeah. We can't have three.
Their property wasn't unique enough.
How is this different than that?
Okay.
We're treating it as a corner lot, so we're giving them the same two that we gave.
And we gave the, we gave, actually gave them exactly what we gave the.
That's what I asked.
So it is the same, yeah.
Any other business from gentlemen? Any other business?
Nope.
Okay, uh, January meeting is when?
Actually will be on January, if presuming we have one.
Yeah.
It will be on January ninth.
January ninth, okay.
The planning pack has a new schedule for them, so I will, as long as they approve that, I will send it to all of you. Since the planning commission meets and you guys meet as needed at the.
Okay.
Yep. It'd be duplicated.
Yeah.
It's all right. They all have. It's not a problem.
We just like making life difficult for you. Absolutely. Very cool. Yeah.
Folks, we will call to order the December fifth regular meeting of the Adrian City Planning Commission. We could have a roll call, please.
Yes. Chikovitz.
Present.
Love.
Yep.
Weatherby.
Present.
Johnson.
Present.
Watson.
Present.
Taylor.
Present.
Gauss.
Present.
What commission members present?
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of the minutes of our November meeting. Commissioners, you have copies of those minutes. I presume you've had an opportunity to review them. Are there any additions or corrections to the November twenty twenty-three minutes?
I have one correction.
Mr. Taylor.
On page four, it says the motion carried unanimously four to zero, but there were actually seven of us devoted, so.
Ah, okay.
Minor.
That's good.
Thank you. So I get paid to do.
Any other additions or corrections to the November meeting minutes? Hearing none, would entertain a motion for their approval is corrected.
So moved. Support.
We have motion and support for approval of the minutes as corrected. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Uh, next item on our agenda is a consideration of our two thousand twenty-four meeting schedule. And as noted, there's only two exceptions to our first regular first Tuesday meeting, and that would be in January and in September, allowing for New Year's Day and Labor Day. Any comments or questions on the proposed schedule? If none, we would entertain a motion to approve that for the coming year.
So move.
Or if motion and support, Taylor and Gauss, any additional discussion? Again, all those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
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 That schedule is approved, subject to adjustments later in the year.
Yes.
Um, there's no old business, but we do have a follow-up discussion on our meeting from last, our issue from last month related to raising chickens in the educational research and office district. And we have folks from Santa Heights back with us. And if, once again, you'd identify yourself. And as I recall from last time, we just asked for a little bit more information.
Yeah.
And please proceed. Again, identify yourself for our minutes and then go ahead.
My name is Mercedes Starr, and I've brought with me the majority of our honors senior seminar class. So Emily, Isabel, Audrey, Kenzie, and then of course, Dr. J, Dr. Julius Nagy have all joined us today. Um, it seemed like the consensus last month was that we wanted more information about the beetle that we were interested in eliminating with the addition of these chickens. So we've done a little bit more research about the beetle and have come forward with some ideas, and perhaps you can give your recommendation on it as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
Is your class concerned about the chickens and the beetles and the care of the garden? Or is it like a public policy class where you're teaching them to come here or and do this kind of thing, or all of the above?
Sort of, sort of nice.
Yes, just so, just so I'm clear when I'm listening to what she has to say and take it all in.
This started back in August that our new president in briefing me to his policies and introducing himself to me brought up that the permaculture garden had brought this to him as an idea so they wouldn't have to spray repeatedly all kinds of pesticides and things like that to maintain the fruit. And so it was the manager of the permaculture center who also didn't know the codes or anything else, and they thought it would be a good project for a group of senior honor students to take on to learn how city government works and to get this through. But the ultimate goal really is to get chickens in the permaculture center to help maintain the beetle population and take it down. It just so happens that they chose a project where they learned a lot about public policy and how city government works in Adrian, Michigan.
Okay. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Hopefully that is helpful. Um, we spoke a little bit to our goal last month, but just to revisit, we want to revisit the planning commission for the recommendation about permitting fowl and education research and office zones, ERO, ERO zones specifically for the permaculture garden of the Adrian Dominican Sisters have fowl as a non pesticide option to target the plume circulo beetle and as an education opportunity for students and community members. Audrey, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. Um, more specific information about this beetle is that it is native to North America, specifically east of the Mississippi. This is not an invasive species. This is native to the area. But they target fruit growing states and palpate in the fallen fruit and overwinter in the ground debris and then come back each spring and summer. As the permaculture garden is against all pesticides, they're thinking that chickens would act as a better option since they will eat the fallen fruit from the trees and discover the larval inside. Once they discover that larval, they'll hunt down the larvae and then scratch through the debris beneath the trees and look to eat additional larvae. Um, this is less environmentally impactful than weekly spraying and would gain the same level of control. So that's the end option that. Ongoing research is showing that there's some organic and natural sprays that have negative effects on honeybees and other pollinators, which they're looking to increase in the permaculture garden and aren't looking to go into that option. If we have additional questions on the beetle, that is the extent of our research. Yes.
I have a couple of questions here.
Sure.
In reading your material. So until the fruit either falls or if it's infested, it ultimately will fall as well, right? So you really don't have any, my question is, how does, the beetle can't prevent that from happening, right? So the fruit are going to become.
Sure. The beetle will also come up, will climb up the tree and enter into the fruit and make it fall prematurely.
That wasn't clear in your material. One question. Okay.
Certainly. Yes. Apologies. So it, it is originally in the rotting fruit that has fallen, but once the beetle recognizes that that fruit is in the area, it will start climbing trees.
That's really good. Okay.
Yes. Um, once again, we've brought forth the comments of Dr. Carly Rush, the assistant professor of biology at Santa Heights, and then Mike Walters, the permaculture specialist. They speak to the benefits of chickens as pest control, which consume ticks and increased Lyme disease and a myriad of other options. And we also have speaking to the damage that happens within the permaculture garden that we're looking to fight. Um, it also, uh, the benefit of the chicken would be community building. Uh, Dr. Carly Rush speaks to the interactions that form bonds between the chickens and their caretakers and are thinking that as we invite more community members into the permaculture garden, they'll be able to build those bonds and have more of a community sense around the animals being there. And Mike Walters also speaks to being able to teach techniques and practices that community members would be able to implement themselves in their own gardens as well as offering something additional for them to be able to visit while community members won't be able to have chickens, they would be able to use the same permaculture practices. Next slide. Um, and then Carly Rush has put forward a list of opportunities that Santa Heights University could use the chickens for in animal biology classes. I won't read through the extent of it, but mostly she's looking at animal behavior and utilizing thriving living chickens as opposed to performing dissections being very helpful for students. And then we have included the permaculture dimensions within our paperwork here. There is ample space for chickens and the amount of chickens that we are proposing. So we wanted to recognize that. And then finally, we have our proposed ordinance. We recognize that we are very new to this process and are open to as many notes on that as you may have. Sort of specifically looking at the number of feet the fowl should be kept from residential areas, or if the wording should include they, they should only be within ERO zones or that specific wording around the location of the fowl. But recognizing, of course, that it would stay away from all residential zones. And thank you. Just looking to discuss next steps and follow-up questions.
Um, some questions, mostly related not so much to your presentation, but to more of the, the ordinance issues.
Sure.
Um, because the proposed ordinance says that, uh, number of fowl allowed should be determined by the local zoning authority, uh, taking into consideration the available space. How many chickens did you anticipate being at the Santa Heights location?
At the Santa Heights location, we are requesting twenty. Within the purposes of this ordinance, we are looking at maxing out at thirty. Um, we're not looking for any additional than that.
How, how would you propose that the ordinance be phrased then? Let me back up just a minute. There are generally two types of uses within the city or ordinances. One is a use by right, meaning if you're in the ER, if, if this was a use by right and you're in the ERO district, you can have chickens, period. Uh, maybe subject to some rules. There's also, the other option would be to have it be a subject, a use subject to a special use permit. Whoever proposes to have chickens would need to come before the planning commission and say, here's what I'm proposing to do. May I, if I meet the criteria, may I do that? Um, so I'm thinking that maybe the proposal would be that this would be by a special use permit.
Yes, that's what we were thinking as well. We had mentioned that it should be kept under a specific permit that whoever is looking for chickens would come before you and go through this similar process. But we wanted to be open to your recommendation as to how that process should be governed.
So probably a special use permit. Yes. And the other issue then would be, would, should the ordinance be based on the number of chickens, should the number of chickens permitted be based on square footage available for housing the chickens? And is there a, is there a rule of thumb for how many chickens per square foot kind of thing?
Sure. Um, following the research of Jeremy, we looked at the recommendation of three square feet per chicken.
Three square feet per chicken?
Yes.
Okay. So how many chickens then could you, could you conceivably have in your permaculture area? Sounds like a lot of chickens.
Hundreds.
Many more than what we're requesting or that we need.
Yeah, exactly. Well, and, and, and the reason I'm asking this is when, when, when we get around to actually writing a specific ordinance.
Sure.
Um, we need to be able to say, you know, how many, either a finite number of chickens or how many chickens per square foot are permitted.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, when I originally drafted that ordinance, it was three square foot per space within the coop. So you could look at it that way versus the entire property. So if they plan to put a coop, it would require three square foot of space.
For each chicken.
Yeah. They, they may be free range and run through, but they have to have a coop in some form or fashion. So, you know, if they wanted thirty chickens, you're looking at thirty square feet, right? So, okay, no more than ninety, ninety square feet. So ninety square feet. So they would need that for thirteen. Okay.
And I don't know if it would be possible to have the land requirement in addition to a cap of number of chickens and to cap it that way, just to offer both regulations.
Other questions or comments?
Well, my, my colleagues will get on my case about this, but in reading today, I noticed that, and by the way, great presentation. You talk about fowl and you talk about chicken, then you talk about fall and you talk about chicken. So I, you know, did a little bit of research. What is fowl? Well, depending on where you look, it could be ducks, geese, turkeys or chickens. So maybe we need to just use chickens, not fowl.
Or it could be Guinea fowl. They really like to eat bugs, but they like to scream too, which is the other.
Peacocks.
Peacocks also, yes.
Thank you for your note. We will definitely change our language.
Well, I have, I have a question about language.
Yes.
So in reading, um, the proposed ornament, ordinance in four point three eight, it says animal bees, livestock and fowl use shelter and storage. No animals, livestock or fowls or structures are the same, other than commonly, common household pets shall be permitted for an accessory use, shelter or storage in the city with exception of the ERO. Would that also open up in this wording livestock? Et cetera, et cetera, because it.
Yes. Can I, one second. Did you write this or did they write this?
No.
They wrote.
Neither. It's completely us.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Yeah.
I didn't.
No.
Yeah, you would have to make the exception subject to the other section that, well, subject to the section that lays out the exception, right? Lays out the rules for that use.
Mine's all raise a cap.
Thank you. Oh, I have a question.
Certainly.
If that's okay. Mr. Chairman, thank you. So you did a lot of research here on how the chickens are going to help you kill off the beetles. Did you do any research on the diseases carried by chickens, salmonella and other things, and what the effect might be on the caretakers and?
We didn't. We did more research on the infections that the beetles, fleas and other insects that would be eaten would include. It is our hope that we would get healthy chickens, but we can certainly do additional.
Well, the, the birds that now have the avian flu were healthy at one point in time.
Yes.
You know, there's, there's that. So I, I'd be interested, at least some comments. That was, that was an issue that was discussed extensively when the city commission, uh, opposed or voted against residential chickens last year, a year or so ago, two years ago, maybe.
Absolutely. Is that something that you would like us to do more research and come before this board again or just keep it in mind?
I just think keep it in mind.
This semester's almost over.
Yeah, yeah. You want this, you want to put this to bed before Christmas.
Yeah. But in, in a, but in a similar vein, because Commissioner Gauss mentioned that, you know, the city commission has already considered this for residential. Considered allowing chickens in residential districts. Are we creating a precedent here where this will come back to haunt us, do you think? Uh, if we were to move forward with this, is this opening the door for the chickens to get its nose in the tent, so to speak?
We did reach, reach out to the other institutions that reside within ERO zones and asked for their feedback, support or concerns about our project, and we got no response from.
Adrian College.
Any of them.
Oh, okay.
Um, so I doubt that it's something that they are interested in.
I, I was more concerned about the folks, my concern was the folks that were advocating for them to be permitted in residential districts.
If we're going to go down this lane right now.
Yeah.
I mean, I no offense, I'm totally against this.
Well, that's.
Because it's, you're right, you're sticking, you're sticking your neck out.
The chickens.
Why are they better than anybody else?
But if we, you know where I was on chickens.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I.
I mean, I, I don't, I love what they're doing or trying to do. But it's why, we're going to set a precedent that.
Can we, can we draw that line at the ERO though and just say it not our one, our. It not R one, R two, A, R fourteen, whatever we got. You know, the steering and zoning thing, but can, you know, can we isolate it? And I'm asking that question.
Yeah, and and further, it it not only will be limited to ERO, but limited to. A certain kind of situation or facility within ERO that. You're you're basically going to describe the permaculture garden or something like it. And that's where the opportunity will be, and so there's a. Very finite number of places that can happen, unlike the students have suggested. It further will have to be a certain distance away from a residential district, which, you know, pretty much. Speaks for the fact that it's not intended to be in the residential district.
So Brian, I I had the same concerns from the very beginning, and, you know, I I kind of, my mind justified, well, it's ERO. Um, but the other concerns I've got is just an optics thing.
Yeah.
I know the community is going to say, oh, you always do the stuff for the colleges and you don't do the same thing for the residents, and I think again. I mean, that that will come up.
Of course we.
But but I think we can talk about, this is an educational research.
Project.
Project, and. I I think we can justify it and we'll get some heat, there's no doubt the city commission will get some heat on this, but.
Not getting any heat, you are.
I I think, yeah, I I, they're gonna come back to me and say, hey, you're the anti-chicken guy, how come you're supporting this?
Yeah, so. And just to be clear, this for for the time being, this is simply a discussion item. Yes, that, and we don't have a, we do not have a formal. Right, right, and so this is merely a discussion item. A work in progress.
This is in the context of research, you know, we can't lose sight of that.
Right, yes, right.
And I know we can't stipulate that in the future, but, but it's still a little bit different, that's the one caveat here.
Ladies, sir, we appreciate the your effort on this and we will take it under consideration. And we'll probably keep you. Keep your eye on the, on the news and we'll see where it goes from here.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can we ask what next steps would be?
Well, the next step would be for the planning commission to ask staff to draft a a ordinance. For us to review and to consider and then have a public hearing on it. Uh, probably tweak it. Uh, and then the formal step would be if we were to approve it, it would be in the form of a recommendation to the city commission.
So that probably wouldn't happen.
Oh, no. Yeah, if if it would be February, the very, this is probably a four or five month. To do.
Understood.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much for your time.
We need to make a motion, correct stat, to develop ordinance?
If we would.
That's our discussion.
If we want to, Gordon, yes. Yep.
I make that motion. Yeah, I I would move that we direct city staff to develop an ordinance that for our consideration.
Is there support for that? We have motion and support. Discussion. Well, this discussion on the motion.
I mean, I'm okay with discussing it more, I mean. And taking a look at it. Just concerned that that's what's gonna happen.
Well, here's, here's really the issue, is if if the majority of the commission. Thinks this is something we wish to look at in more detail, then that's what we should do. If the majority of the commission thinks we aren't interested in this moving forward, then we shouldn't waste staff's time.
I think we should certainly take further look at this. And I would just comment that, don't we have different zoning districts within this city? Because there are different needs within each of those specific zones. So I see how we can say that the ERO cannot have its own specific needs. Because it does, so I, you know, if those chickens leak across the border into somebody else's yard or whatever.
There can be chicken dinner.
It was more of a political question than it was as a practical, I raised it, it was.
Right, yeah.
It was a political question.
And that's what he said, this is not a political issue in this, in this context. It's an issue of whether an ERO can have. Exceptions to what the rest of the 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 city zones have.
And they do.
And they do.
As it is, yes.
And they do.
Okay. So. My sense, my sense of the body is, is that we do want to explore this further with a draft ordinance. We have a motion, we have support, is there any additional discussion?
Uh, Watson? Support Johnson?
Support.
Weatherby?
Support.
Gauss?
Support.
Taylor?
Support.
Cobits?
Yes.
Love?
Yes.
Okay. So.
So I'll bring a draft to the.
If that's within your schedule, if that's doable within your schedule.
I can make that.
Or or stand it out beforehand for comments or something.
Make that work, so, so your question, then we're about to go over a draft from last time, if you remember the accessory parking. So this is the next step that you would see and then they would move it forward, so that's answering to your question.
Okay, so that's first step of moving it forward, there we go. Yeah. Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a nice holiday and and.
You're welcome to stay.
Yeah, you can stay if you want. Or go, whatever, yeah.
They've got papers to write.
Okay, next item on our agenda is follow up discussion on accessory vehicles. We have a storage draft ordinance before us. Please, Jeremiah.
So, uh, took out some redundancies, so B, I removed because it. Discusses the chief of police extending permits, so we don't need that in zoning ordinance. Um, C was redundant with regards to, I believe it was B. Yeah, just basically said the same thing again. Um, I did put in.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Yeah, sorry. So I did put in that they must use a curb cut, so no going over the curbs like we discussed. They cannot be greater than twenty-two feet as discussed, and they need to be on an improved surface such as asphalt or a concrete slab. Um, and then again, with C, maintain all setback distances required in accessory structure of that size. So they need to remain three to five feet from the side lot lines, depending on their district.
But we have limited what can be parked in the rear yard to licensed vehicles. Right, so they're within that list of things, there are a whole number of things like camper bodies and snowmobiles, and so what we said is vehicles. That maybe. Where did we put it? I thought we added.
Oh, and and B, it's the first full sentence.
With respect to vehicle license.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, it didn't get marked as changed, but yeah. So the idea being that if it's a vehicle that can drive on the street, then it can be parked in a legitimate parking place that is in the. Rear yard.
So there's no longer any exterior stor- storage of utility trailers, boat, well.
Correct.
Well, boat trailers, utility trailers have licenses.
Well, we could talk, I mean, that's something to talk about, right? I mean, the intent was to limit it to things, parking that would be typically drivable, or was.
Or towable.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Not, you know, camper bodies and things that you would remove from. Your vehicle and store, you know, that that felt like it was in the nature of outdoor storage.
Would that be snowmobiles as well?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be snowmobiles because they're not licensed to. Travel on the street and boats likewise.
I, I'm in favor of that, I think, I think that's.
Okay, so wait, so let's, so just, we need to be, I'm confused, you've got me way confused here. So. I think it needs to be worded. So you're saying that a boat, you can't store a boat in your backyard or a snowmobile's on a trailer in the backyard?
Correct, that is what I'm saying.
That's gonna be a, that's gonna be a major problem.
Well, the default position is, everything is stored, you can store all these things in an enclosed building. Or with respect to those which are licensed, it should be licensed for operation on a public street. Then within the confines of a completely enclosed rear yard, and again, it's, you gotta have a fence around your backyard as that reads. Such vehicles must use a curb cut or pave to enter, right, and so on, and park on pavement.
We probably need to define what a completely enclosed rear yard.
That's what my question was too.
That's gotta be a fence, right?
Well, I meant, I meant a fence, yes.
Yes, but we we need to say that then.
Somehow the change tracking got turned off on here, so there's changes in here that don't appear in red.
For, but for example, is my, if I have a chain link fence on my backyard, is that enclosed? No, you know. Screening, screen, yeah, yeah.
Oh, really?
I don't know if I'm. Yeah, I don't think I'm in favor of that. If you can put it in my back, if you can put it in your backyard.
This is gonna be, this is, this is, if if we were to enact this, this is gonna be chaos. Because there's just too much of it already. Yeah, I I mean, I'm, I wish it was like this, I don't misunderstand, this is how I want it to be.
I'll tell you, I get a lot of complaints, so people says, you know, your neighbor's got a sailboat in the side yard. I'm in favor of this, I I really, I know it's gonna open a whole can of worms, there could be a lot of upset people, but. There could be a lot of people happy too.
I have a question. Is there any reason why the provision for a short term? Use or storage was taken out of it?
Right.
So that number, so letter B was actually for if. So if if you read into it, it says, um, parking in a rear yard property not to exceed two weeks. On lands not approved for such use, so basically, basically what it's saying is someone. If you have family that comes and is gonna stay in their camper for whatever amount of time, Vince can say. You can do it for two weeks.
Yeah.
Which is nonsensical in our order.
Because we don't want.
Well, it is.
With the strictness of this, though, are you taking out like a twenty-four hour leniency of people emptying their campers before they go park it?
Yeah, that does need to be addressed and it's not addressed in here is, you know, A. Are you gonna let people camp in the driveway? And so if the answer to that, no.
Why can't, okay, grandma, grandpa showed for a week.
I have that exact thing going on right now with Thanksgiving, so there was a couple that was staying. Their parents were coming in and they were staying in an RV, and so Matt called me about it because they called him and I had to send them to Vince. Who can then say, yes, you can stay there for X amount of time. So it did use that.
I mean, theoretically, they could, well, you can't park in the street.
Well, we don't want the police chief involved in any of that.
No, no, no.
But the the question A is, do you want to allow that camping in the driveway for a period of time, recognizing that? It becomes a problem policing it, because you gotta have some mechanism for knowing how long it's been there.
Yeah.
You know, and, yeah, I mean, ideally, you need a permit so that we know when you started and when you are to end, like we. You know, we issue permits like like Matt issues those for on-street parking, you know, if you have circumstances. Where you can't park in your driveway, he could issue a temporary on-street parking permit. Hopefully, he doesn't issue those for RVs, one year he did do that, we never did that again. And and then question two is, um, to Bob's point. Do you allow for a period of time when they can just be parked in the driveway because you're coming and going from vacation?
Well, which you can say, you know, no more than. Twenty-four, thir- thirty-six hours, forty-eight hours, something like that is the maximum. Um, would be fairly easy to. Codify.
Easy to say, again, you know, code officer has to go that by there four days in a row, if it's thirty-six hours to make sure that. Uh, they're compliant.
I mean, I'm, I think a permit's the way to go, I mean. Let's be honest, twenty-four hours, the chances of Glenn or somebody driving, you know, if you're getting ready to go on a trip, twenty-four hours. Unless your neighbor calls. Nobody's gonna, you know. No, chances are Glenn's not, you know, my neighbor, one neighbor has his there a couple times a year for a day or two while he's loading up and then he's gone.
Yeah.
They're going camping, they can, who would think in twenty-four hours they could pack?
Yes.
Twenty-four hours.
And and Glenn and. Jake, I mean, they have the authority to be like, when they knock on the door and the guy's like, I'm leaving tomorrow, we're just loading the thing up. You know.
And he can drive by the next day and see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The bigger problem that I've seen, and I've had it happen on our street, is. People go out there and park their camper out, leave it a long time with or without a permit, and then have people living in it while it's parked on the street.
Well, that's, that's, I mean, you shouldn't be parked on the street twenty-four hours anyways.
Yeah, that's illegal as it is.
Stand, but they can get a permit from Matt that allows them to park on the street, not necessarily to house people.
But it there, I I don't think Matt's issuing any permits to RVs anymore.
But in the last time we talked about, and that's good, the last time, if they, you could get an annual permit, so you can leave the thing out there all year long. As opposed to.
Really?
Well, you can get an annual permit, but we try to, for parking on the street, we don't give them to RVs, but. We do give them out if there are, again, he investigates and if there are circumstances where. For some reason, their off-street parking opportunity is inadequate, he will give annual permits, yes. But those are for passenger vehicles.
But at least one that I know.
Well, it happened once, it happened once and that hopefully never again.
And and we've had experiences, just it in from the ZBA in just the last couple of years of people living in their tent camper. Over on the east side, I mean, living in their tent. And there was another case over on Santa Heights Drive of people, of a travel trailer parked out with people residing in it for months at a time. Um, probably, I have to believe, without any kind of sewer or sanitary hookup.
Right.
In all, both cases. I think we're gonna have a really hard time, I, like I said, I'm in favor of this, I think we're gonna have a really hard time with this backyard not allowing. Utility trailer or. Snowmobiles.
I think the.
Motorhomes and.
The, that needs to be tightened up some, you know, if you can get it in your backyard. That's fine.
My my friend Darcy who lives on St. Joseph Street has got a neighbor, I bet you has got. Three snowmobiles and two golf carts and a travel trailer all just parked in the backyard. And it's a.
Would she, would she feel it was better if there was a? Solid six-foot fence around the backyard, fences make good neighbors in general, right?
Fences do make good neighbors, yeah. Yeah, it it's it's a real, it's a real isol. And so I'm arguing both sides here, it's gonna be hard to enforce.
Well, we're not enforcing the rule as it stands now.
True.
Which is a problem, the problem is not the ordinance, the problem is that for so many years, nobody did it. And this is the, this is the, the, the apple we've bitten, that we've decided to.
Take a bigger bite.
No, decided to enforce the law as it stands.
They're gonna eat the whole apple.
There's, I mean, and this goes for a bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
In our ordinance, you know. It it's, it's un, let's just call it unfortunate growing pains, like if we, everybody's like, oh, I want you to be like Ann Arbor, okay, here you go. Here it is, right here in black and red. You know, this is the kind of thing that those type of cities do, well, we don't want it, well. This is how you clean things up.
Right, when we talk about blight, you know, blight isn't. Yeah, it's not just crash, it's not just peeling paint, you know, it's yards in.
Disarray.
Disarray, right, and it's a style of living in some cases. And, you know, the more you cause things to have to be stored indoors, the more you address that issue.
I I'm in favor of this, I mean, cleaning it up a little bit, we need to clean up the language, but I'm in favor of the concept.
Absolutely, and I I, and this whole, you know, there's a lot of people in this town, you see them every Tuesday and Saturday, that have a little teeny tiny.
Utility trailer.
Utility trailer, that they keep their grass bags on, it sits in their backyard.
Yeah.
You know. That's fine, if you have a giant work trailer, you know, if I was keeping my giant lawn trailer in my backyard next to my neighbors, no.
But we're gonna have a hard time.
This thing, you can, you can say no bigger than eight feet, an eight-foot utility trailer is pretty small. You know, there's, there's, you know, right here, twenty-two-foot trailer.
Yep.
You know, that's a.
But I think as 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 Brian suggested earlier, we are not able to enforce what exists right now, that seems to be the issue. If we make it more restrictive, which we seem to be doing with the new language. Then how are we going to enforce this new even more strict language? And I will say, I think that if we have protests now because there's, um, you know, snowmobiles in the yard or someone in the drive, I think. If we go forward with it this strict, I think we'll have a lot of people unhappy, a lot of people, and I think rightly so.
I I wouldn't say that we're unable to enforce it, uh, what I, what, the reason we brought this to you is because we had requests to enforce it. And we realized that. No, not that we don't have the means. The, we do have the language, but we, like Brian was saying, we left it go for so long. That lots of people are doing it, so we wanted to make sure that you were really sure that this is what you wanted to say. Before we went out and started writing up all kinds of people who have RV, you know, and the case in question was RVs who have RVs. That aren't all the way in their backyard. Right, and there's a lot of those, and there's a lot of other things too. And we can do it, but. You know.
The complaints are more from uproar for sure.
Aren't from the said owners of these things. They're from the people next door.
Oh, correct.
Yeah.
Sure.
Correct.
So it's. To be upset are the ones that we're now making them not upset their neighbors.
Yeah.
Right.
Yes.
Also be having people who come home from the lake in the summer or up north in the winter or whatever and wanna park their. Snowmobiles or their boats in their driveway or in their yard or.
Well, you know, and I don't.
A short amount of time.
Okay.
And then we say that.
Yeah.
Now we're saying no. So we can't. So I think those people will be very upset.
Let's take a snowmobile. So I have one trailer. I like my snowmobile, my side-by-sides, my canoes. You, you shouldn't be storing those in your backyard. You shouldn't be taking your snowmobiles off your trailer, leaving them in your backyard to put your side-by-side on there. To later on, take your side-by-side, put it in the yard, put your canoes on.
Or like the guy on Comstock.
And I'm sorry, if you can afford, if you can afford to buy the toy, you can afford to take care of it. Now, if you wanna park your two-place snowmobile trailer in your backyard. That's fine. I, I mean, that's, it's just, that's part of.
You, you know, may, maybe, maybe the ordinance should say you're, you're limited to one.
Or just aside, yeah, one trailer size. You know, I, I like the, the, the asphalt and. Or concrete, but I think it should also be like compacted stone, you know. Because that's, you know, we put, we put those, those pre-made sheds. You know, you put them on a little, a little compacted base of concrete and flop that in your backyard. How different is that than a little eight by ten? Utility trailer.
Mm-hmm.
So now if you have to have an enclosure. Just, just think about that. So now you have to have an enclosure, which means you have to have a. Six-foot fence, five or six-foot fence, right? So now that's, that's gonna turn a lot of people off. They're gonna say, I've got a three thousand dollar trailer here. I'm gonna put a ten thousand dollar fence up.
I, I, I don't like the, the enclosed backyard.
The fence backyard thing.
No.
No, no.
But I think. Back to what Mike said, you know, he's got somebody, his neighbor's got six different things and a hundred and forty-two square feet or whatever it is.
You know, we have, we have an ordinance, the ordinance for the sheds is based on your property size, right?
Yeah. Should, yeah.
I mean, I could put three trailers in my backyard and it wouldn't look terrible.
Okay.
Your backyard down, there'd be nowhere, one would be in the pool.
Yeah, we normally don't allow that.
Yeah, but that's what I mean, like, you know. Yeah, wait a minute.
It, it sounds like there's not a whole lot of support for requiring a fully enclosed backyard in order to use it for storage. Does that, is that true?
Oh, well.
Well, I think you have cer- certain parts of the city where an enclosure is appropriate and certain parts were not, so I. Right, so then I wouldn't, I would, I'd support not having.
That's why we got different.
I, I think the answer to the question is there has to be some sort of. Formula as there is with sheds, like. If you have a certain sized backyard, you can park your trailer back, a certain sized trailer. Not to, I, I mean, I like the twenty-two feet.
Yeah.
Like a twenty-two foot trailer, that's a. That's a big camp.
So treating it like an accessory building.
Yeah, but so what if I have my twenty-two foot trailer and my snowmobile trailer?
You get.
And my.
You get one. I mean, and that's.
I mean, that, I'm fine with that, right?
That's the shed. I mean, that's the same thing as a shed.
Yeah, you get one.
Yeah.
But again, enforcement.
But that's.
We've got a lot, lots of people with. There, there's a guy over on Oak Street.
We can also hear.
With three sheds, yes.
Yeah. But that's the, that's the.
Yep.
I don't understand where we were, are on the short term, though. If I come back from the UP with my snowmobiles, which I don't have on my trailer, which I don't have, and wanna park it in, in my, in my.
Driveway.
Driveway. First of all, if I parked it next to the carriage house, you couldn't even see it. You know, it would be, that would be a moot point. But am I allowed to do it for a, a day without having to worry about somebody coming knocking on my door? Am I allowed to do that for two days without someone coming and knocking on my door?
I think twenty-four hours.
I think forty-eight would even be safer, but.
Well, forty-eight hours complicates enforcement, right? Because you don't just go have to go by. The next day, you have to go by the day after that too.
Understood.
But twenty-four hours is pretty easy to monitor.
You only have to check once.
You only have.
Well, if it's forty-eight, can't you just check at the end of forty-eight and think, oh, maybe they've.
Well, you gotta keep track.
Our grace.
When they can, can they technically say move it for a day and now it's back and get a new forty-eight?
Well, that you have to somehow draft that out of the, the, draft that opportunity out of what you allow in your language.
Twenty-four hours per, or forty-eight hours in any seven day period or something, yeah. But Nancy's right, if you say, if, if you say. You got forty-eight hours, you really don't have to come back and check once at the end of the forty-eight hour period. You don't have to check every twelve hours just to see. But it's true.
And I, that's based on a report too.
Yes, right.
Your neighbor reports you and it's already been there two days.
Yes.
So they come back and. Do it.
This could be an interesting. Uh, question from our consulting team. What do you think about this?
For the, for the Skinnahights Honors program next year?
Yes, there we go.
Some of us are involved.
I know, I know, I was.
Do we have, do we have some, uh, example language from other municipalities that? That would be worth looking at, um.
Well, we can pull some. We're trying to get a sense of. You know, what you want to accomplish and then we can look for language to accomplish.
I mean, what, Ann Arbor's was neat and tidy. It wasn't that, there was way less than I thought it would be and it was like, no twenty-two footers. Gotta be on a, some sort of slab. I mean.
We might open up a whole new entrepreneurial movement in this community by having the. More storage space for trailers.
More fences, yeah.
Well, the direction I perceived from your discussion last time was, you know, to your comment about you can afford the toy, you can afford to store it.
Yeah.
Right? You know, like, we tried to draft something that would. Really limit what could be stored outdoors.
I don't. I don't wanna limit what can be stored outdoors. I just wanna clean up. A lot, you know.
I wanna make it look good.
I wanted to make it look good, which making it look good means getting. The snowmobiles are side-by-side, the canoes, the three trailers. That are all taking up the entire backyard, you know.
Right. So there's gotta be a limit.
You don't want clutter.
Right, yeah. If there was, if there was a concrete pad and the, and the snowmobile trailer was right here and square and the fourteen-foot boat is right next to it and square. You know.
Square up and mow around it.
It's trimmed and mowed around it, but so often they're not.
What would, what would happen or what, I wonder what it would look like if we simply enforced it as it is?
Well, we do have to get rid of the chief of police thing and that.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, we need to clean it up regardless.
Well, right now, the way it reads is you can put all these things.
In the backyard.
In your backyard.
Yeah.
And as many as you want. As long as you get it behind your house.
So there really is very few.
Let me see. Yeah, but this says. Not to exceed a period of two weeks.
No, that's, that's for temporary use. I mean, temporary.
That's all I'm talking about is temporary.
Oh, but I think it's, 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 it's the stricken paragraph C that applies to.
Paragraph C says it all. Behind your house.
You can have whatever you want.
Right.
She's on the corner. What's her, was her?
Everybody has some sort of backyard, but.
Even hoping you, there's always storm in my backyard.
But that, that is, that exact issue arises and we've had repetitive complaints about situations where. It's a corner lot. Do they have a backyard? Sure, they got a backyard, but you can see it from the street because it's. You know, visible from the side.
The ordinance also states that they can. Determine their own rear yard if they, the language is weird, but they can come and determine their rear yard to me, which then I have to say, okay, you're in your rear yard.
Mm-hmm.
So then the other becomes the side and plus, so it muddies that even worse when you look at that.
This is, this is the, the. We wanna clean things up in our town.
Yes, we do.
And unfortunately, it's, some of it's gonna hurt.
Mm-hmm.
You know, i- if this is what. Needs to be done, this is what needs to be done.
Enforcement area of law.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And there, there needs to be, there's, there should be a limit on how many accessory vehicles I can have in my yard, period. And how big they can be and how spread out they can be. What they're on, yes. Gordon, I, I like that. I think we're gonna have a really hard time selling that to the public.
I mean, okay, let's put, let's say you put up a six-foot fence. I can put. All kinds of shit behind there and nobody's gonna see it. You're gonna create, you're gonna create, okay, this is my secret zone.
Uh, no one's gonna see it except your neighbor who has a two-story house and can see.
Yeah, but yeah.
Who knows, your neighbor's got the same feeling. It's.
I happen to have that neighbor.
Yeah. We should clean up your yard.
It's not my yard. I have the six-foot fence that I could see his backyard.
I'm not sure that's enough information. I mean, is there a sense here of? Where we wanna be?
Well, I, I mean, we can move the discussion along with something.
Yeah.
Further, I, you know, I, I mean, I think I'm not hearing support for enclosing the backyard.
Well.
I am hearing support for limiting the number and size. Um, of things and having a formula that allows.
Yep.
Things based on the available area.
Yep, yes.
So we can, and then, yeah, we gotta put something back for short-term, you know.
And I, and I realize that it's very difficult to enforce, but if there could be some language that says something about. Well, I, I was thinking no one more, something that says that it needs to be neat and orderly, but how do you, I mean, how do you define that, you know?
That's.
Yeah.
Well, you know, you do it.
Your definition.
You do it by creating defined spaces where it can be, which is where you started on this.
Right, right.
Which was some sort of pad back.
Yes. True, and that kind of. If you got, if it's, if it's on a pad, that, and it's limited to a certain amount of space, that kind of. Takes care of a whole bunch of stuff right there.
I would ask you, isn't. Is it true? Like you said, the chain link, do we need, do we need to find problems? I don't know.
You're there at the time by making it. All the stuff that's made in progress.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there's lots of.
Right.
There's lots of places you can't even get into people's backyards with a trailer.
Yeah.
I mean, in your neighborhood, Doc, could you get a tra, could you get, if you had a travel trailer, could you get it into your backyard?
What then?
Could you get a travel trailer into your backyard if you had one?
About a twenty-nine inch.
But that's what I mean, like you get between your neighbor's house and yours.
Get a bigger gate, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that's what I mean. It, a lot of it will self.
Regulate.
Self-regulate.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I, I think. Limiting the number, limiting the number based on the square footage there and having it have to be on a defined area will help a lot.
Uh, no, I just have a, a question for you that, so. There's been a gentleman that's been living in a camper, moving around town. I don't know if you've all seen him from the Kmart parking lot, yeah. He was down at the old country market for a while and I called Jeremiah and asked about it and he said, well, nobody, the property owner hasn't complained about.
Oh.
Right? Is that, so. Well, how does that fall, how does that? Fall in the ordinance? I'm, I was confused by that.
The ordinance doesn't say anything about.
Camping?
Can't, well, is it camp, he doesn't stay that long, right? I mean, he stays for. A sh, I, I've only seen him for a short period of time. I saw him at the Family Dollar.
Yeah.
You know, but then he moves. You know, but it's really, the property owner can trespass him off there right away.
Yeah.
You know.
But the city doesn't have any, there's no ordinance of the city says.
What, it's a pri, it's private property. It's not, I mean, is it parked? Improperly? Yeah, I suppose it's not in a parking.
But I mean, how is he any different?
But it, we, what we can do to him is very. Limited because what we would, we would deal with the property owner for allowing.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Cause this is dealing with the property owner, not the.
Although I, I, I probably had an ordinance against, against camping, you know, in something other than a.
He answered my question. That, that, that's the pro, this deals with the property owner. In that case, he's not the property owner. That's a whole different. Type situation.
The property owner doesn't wanna throw him off, then yeah, okay, I understand. But I also thought we had an ordinance that prohibited camping.
In parks, yes.
Right. Yes.
Right, yes. Yeah, that's what I say. We can deal with the property owner on, on an issue like that.
Okay. Um. Brian Watson, how are we doing on the, on the ordinance update?
I mean, we had a first, well, we had our second meeting and we went through some things. Um. I think it went pretty well, um.
We're, we're good with the consult, consultancy.
I mean, so far.
Having the right direction.
Yeah, they seemed to be going in the right direction, um.
I think we could share, we could share the audit if Jeremy hasn't given it to all of you. Uh, they did an audit of the entire zoning ordinance. As a way to.
You were way too excited about that, Mike.
As a way to approach what the new ordinance will include and.
Okay.
Uh, so that would be something that you all would be interested in having probably.
I think we had some good discussion, Don, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Did you share that, Jeremiah?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
I, I was impressed with the, uh. You know, the depth that they went into everything. And now, and I focus on three areas next time around.
I think we'll get more out of our second meeting because we'll all be a little more comfortable with how they presented it and using, they used some technology that I had never. Like a whiteboard thing where we all could move her. It was like, I was kind of. By the end of it, I was like, okay, I can understand now what we're doing.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other business to come before the planning commission tonight?
Um, I do have one other thing for this. What? There's a lot of people now that have camper vans that aren't much bigger than a suburban or. Um, yeah, so.
Sprinter.
You know, people might even use them like a Sprinter van.
A van, yes, okay.
You know, I think we should carve out. Some people use them as a personal vehicle.
Right.
You know, so I think we should definitely carve out. You know, you, you could say something that doesn't have a. Bump out, you know, it's not. We have to somehow, cause those are either a class B camper or a class A camper. I can't remember what they are.
Really?
Oh, but some people do in certain, you know, in driver's city or up north, you'll see them just, that's their everyday vehicle.
Right.
Yeah.[1662.57]